Can you hear me through the mics? Is that good? Should I move it closer? I can't tell, I'm afraid, after last meeting. Okay. Good. All right. To read these emergency evacuation procedures, if you must evacuate this room. Because of an emergency, there are two exits with signs. You may exit through the double doors at the north end of the building or the double doors at the east end of the building. I would like to compliment the principal and staff on the excellent condition of the building and want to thank the Steel PTA for the delicious refreshments during our executive session.
I totally put the fruit truck.
Thank you. Is there anything left?
No. I think there are cantaloupes left, but...
Okay. It was very good. The bar is very high. You guys put the bar very high on your executive session refreshments. Okay. The Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on October nineteenth and October twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dreska. Any questions or comments? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I'm going to turn this over to the superintendent. Sorry, getting ahead of myself. It's my favorite part, the treasurer's report. Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the treasurer's report for September two thousand sixteen, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent.
On a yearly basis, we get a report from our fire marshal on the conditions of the building and our emergency drills, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Andazzo and to introduce.
Thank you, Dr. Kennedy. Good evening to the board, to the public. It's like back in the day, we have to do fire inspections in each of our buildings and then we got to report it to the state. We do that by utilizing Bruce Pingam. Bruce Pingam has been a Nassau County Fire Marshal for over twenty-five years. He has several degrees, one in particular in school fire safety, and he's also been the liaison between the whole school district and the New York State Education Board. I'd like to introduce Bruce Pingam for this year's report.
Thanks for the applause, that's unusual. I'm Dr. Kennedy, nice to see you again, all of you. So many faces over here, I've been coming here. Many of you are encouraged to be open before, but for those of you that are new to this, Ross Benson's a yearly thing. Not quite, okay? It's every eleven months. And the reason why it's every eleven months is the state feels that the schools should be observed in all phases of operation. For example, in February, there's snow. Part of the inspection is to make sure that the fire trucks begin to fire hydrants, that the snow is cleared away from the doors so the students and staff can get out safely. An accident would be plaguing summer, but the summer sets a different set of standards which are unique. For example, I'm always proud to say when I come to the board, yes, what we have in my nation. We've all heard this many years. Well, in the summertime, there's a violation almost every school because maintenance must go on. Windows need to be repaired and caught. Shades need to be changed and cleaned. desks have to be repaired. Floors have to be stripped and refreshed. And it gets done in the summer, because the students aren't here. So hence, all the desks and tables and chairs are now repainted and reprocessed. So from a technical standpoint, that's obstruction. The state understands, if the state expects it, they expect it to be repaired. They only say, which Mr. Andazzo is who they're with, and I'm sure a lot of board members heard this before, we just make sure that they have fire alarm notifications and get at the fire stations if needed and put it on one side of the wall as opposed to both so people wouldn't have to walk down the hall like this. That being said, we let the one violation in July, which all the districts had in July because of routine maintenance. There were no other issues, as usual, aboard the schools. I proudly said this once before, the people that were hearing me for a start, several years ago, one of the officials of the board said, "I'm coming down to Long Island and I want you to take me around to a couple of districts. And whatever you do, don't take me to them because they never have any work." And I was like, "That's true," so it's all now without a fire alarm. And I always love to share that story because it speaks well how the district is being run. And that's my report.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for all the thought. But everybody seems to have the same page at work, like global life within the area and politics and personalities and unions, everything fits up in some way. Everybody have a plus, minus, negative.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The second part of my report, I am going to be turning it over to Mrs. Presti. One of the things that we're doing differently this year is when a school building hosts our board meeting, we have an opportunity for that building principal, the building staff to highlight something that's going on in their building, which in almost every case is happening in all buildings. So I opened it up to all of our principals and Mrs. Presti chose to present to you the next generation science standards and how we're addressing them K-2 at Steel School.
Great. So welcome everybody to the board. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about what's happening in actually all of the elementary schools. I chose science because that's consistently a really interesting area. Just talk a little bit about what I didn't like with it because it's hard to see what's going on. I just love the graphics, use the integration of what they're now calling pre-medical learning. And we're going to break apart each one of those, we're going to talk about the practices. And if you're looking at this, a focus upon learning as a developmental progression, children are continually building on and revising their knowledge and abilities, starting from their curiosity about what they see around them and initial conceptions about how it all works. And what you see throughout the presentations, we're talking about the children already have and know and understand in their environment and how to go to keep working on their understanding. Some core ideas, limited focus. There's a number of numerous topics. We're taking one topic and looking at it very deeply throughout the entire course of the year, we're taking very deeply into those topics. And we're really focusing on conceptual learning. It's not just a memorized skill or a table of cards, anything. It's really focusing us to understand. And here, talking about cross-cutting, how to integrate knowledge and scientific explanations and then engaging students and students' behavior. So we've all been more kind of ahead of her, as you'd expect. We're doing, we're designing this, we're taking a whole curriculum this year based on inquiry. Children see the truth, they're basing their knowledge, and that's done through questioning. And some of our kindergarten, our art, which is integrating with the true study. Inquiry implies a follow-up of understanding. And even more importantly, it's taking skills that allow you to find answers to questions and then to construct new knowledge. Most importantly to us as teachers is what's a classroom context and how do we create student engagement? How do we get that spark and desire to learn? In kindergarten, we're doing it through the study of trees. And we're looking at trees more in depth than you could ever possibly imagine. So many kids see, take for granted, you take for granted, we're out in the garden the other day, this picture, the students know there's a nest of the nut trees that give huge topics for discussion for us. Can't believe this, well, starting with bark rubbing. Okay, the kids took a big, huge piece of paper, wrapped it around what she had, and took it to her hand, gave it up to the bark, and then attached that as a vocabulary, rough, hard, bumpy, all those huge words you can use to describe the texture of the bark of the tree. Why is bark important? What does bark do? Protects the tree. We have those lovely Lashu cases. Kids have gone out and collected their own artifacts. They've got leaves, they've got food, they've got branches, they've got acorns, anything else that's connected to trees. Studying squirrels, what do squirrels do, where do squirrels live, how do squirrels move, how they prepare for the wintertime, what do they eat, where they store their food. Again, building upon vocabulary. Here is some of our kindergartners outside their science journals, sketching the trees that they see. They sketch from different perspectives. Some of them are sketching from directly underneath the tree, living up, then they do that through perspective, living back from the tree, that one just can't really train totally. So really adding detail to also enhancing their writing. And here's some examples of kindergarten writing about squirrels. Squirrels hide in towards the winter, they eat acorns, and squirrels run. Again, this work was done through consultation with our consultants working together. They really were taught to integrate their reading and their writing together for the science curriculum. In first grade, we investigate water. Those are the ones you seem to be used to being involved with. Here, you can see all the word words, all vocabulary, words like dull, absorbent, porous, waterproof, toothpick, stity, they're like water stity, acting like a magnet, the molecules attracting to each other. Water can travel. Here, water can stick to water and acts like a magnet. Experiment on the left-hand side shows how water can travel across the paper towel. Children made predictions that things wouldn't happen when the water goes from one container to the next. And then they came, they investigated duck feathers. So water whets, why don't ducks get wet? Why don't wetting is good, they don't get heavy in the water. And they learned, they experimented with duck feathers, the ducks actually clean, and they are constantly adding oil to the feathers and that to keep them from getting wet. And here's their writing about ducks. Ducks will get wet because they spread the oil around them, the water slips off them, they are waterproof. And that's all through investigation, that's all through handout experimentation. And that's made with on to flip the stakes points of that part of the history of study. In second grade, we're investigating soil. So every good scientist needs to have a pair of goggles and a trial outside and collect soil in different processes in school property. And then again, there's all the words that go along with the soil study that keep adding to this experiment and more about soil. And you can see Kevin over there in the corner, they're looking at different types of soil, clay, soil, humus. Here, they separate a mixture of soil, and they can see that there's organic matter in the soil and other things that are said, like the seeds down to the bottom. The left-hand corner is a model of soil, a good type of soil. The children investigate silt, clay, water, sand, air, and they draw diagrams and models of what soil actually looks like. I think you're doing, you're adding roots, sites. So part of this is now an investigation of building environments, there's a structure to add into the models of soil kindergarten or to the world of soil and nests. And then we do have some projects that we're working on, developing, those are the fourth of third graders, and we're working with a few years to have major grade levels in the fourth grade that we're just three partners. And we use a partner drawing out in the garden together. This is some fourth grade traditions of trees. We're doing some hard pointings of themselves. And some part of the way out to the garden.
So I hope that some of the things that I just want to point out, some of the words that were used, understanding, that is a big key word for us. It's not just about doing and recalling, it's about understanding, going deep and acquiring. Last month, we were at Brookside, and you've heard about Brookside's outdoor classrooms. And so you see where the overlap is. A lot of this work, all of this work is really either happening outside or coming from the outside in. So that is a big focus for us, making sure that happens. And the integration of reading, writing, and science in this particular case. The amount of writing, and if you look at the vocabulary that our students are mastering as a result of doing this, sediment, nutrients, minerals, you know, and I dare say that our kids are loving every minute of it. I know that with one of the consultants, we've had teachers that have said, you know, you just, this is just bringing the joy back in learning, it's so much fun. So that was my promise to you, and you can see as we go from school to school, you can see how that is actually being implemented in the curriculum areas. So thank you, Lori, it's a really, really excellent job.
Any, anyone on the board, any questions?
I just would comment that it's nice to see, like, every school has their own personality, but it's nice to see that across the schools, we're seeing some base, some core consistency across. I mean, you can take what I, you know, we're doing outside learning. Each school has a personality as to how they want to do it. There's certain resources that may be available to them, like Brookside has a broad of trees that, you know, they can kind of access where maybe still doesn't have, but they're still doing the study of the trees. And so it's nice to see some consistency across the district.
That's, and we love the voice of schools as well, so you know, if you want to add anything, we'll talk to you about that because you're right, you have all the players, the players, the personality of the school, but it's nice to know that Lori's class here is a really, really comfortable class. And it creates a dialogue with teachers, people are together about what they're doing and what's going on. And Dr. Kennedy, you can't start writing vocabulary too many times. Kids are excited about learning. You know, you come and you watch them, they're just excited about the vibe. They're leaning down, they're crouched down, they're completely leaning down and they're naturally walking, you know, through, but being very, very close to them.
You know, the other thing that it does, which is, which is, it's kind of a side benefit, but it's really not a side benefit, it's just natural to the learning, is that because the kids are so engaged and because they love what they're doing, the kids act like little adults in their classrooms. And, you know, this issue, you know, in other places of classroom management doesn't really exist because our kids are so excited about what they're doing that they're, they're not, it's not an issue. They're not, they're not wandering, their minds aren't wandering, they're just deeply engaged. And, and to be clear, the content, the soil, the water, and the trees are consistent across the grade levels. So.
And they know they're learning, they're, they're just dabbling around last year. And we did a few years of like a fourth grade, a second grade, a year thing. Maybe the kids have studied something hard because they can, whether standing in trees or roots connects to soil, or something on land or water, and then that group of waters all of them connected, which is what we want.
And the other thing that we're looking at to enhance it even further is that study across the elementary schools. So what, what, what's the makeup of water all the way in the north versus all the way in the south? And is there differences? So that's, that's where the curriculum's going to grow.
Right. I have two observations. One was that I did not know that it was the duck that you all might have.
It's a grand, they cream and they...
Yeah. So I need to go back to elementary school.
Water, you grew up on the shore.
I go to the water.
Oh. Sorry.
But the other thing was, was that this, in addition, I think this actually, Lori mentioned this, we kind of go through all that, it's not being mentioned in how it is used.
Yeah.
But I think it may be, and you can speak to this, it actually gives the children, I think, an appreciation of trees and nature and their surroundings.
Well, part of the, 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 The varsity field hockey team won their first Nassau County championship since nineteen ninety-eight, um, the team defeated the seven-time defending Nassau champions, Massapequa, um, two to one in a double, it was one-zero, in a double overtime game, it was one-zero, I know. Um, Daniella Speck scored the winning goal on an assist from senior Kelsey King, her journey ended in the twenty sixteen Nassau County Class A Championships. Congratulations to the Baldwin varsity football team, advancing to the playoffs as the number three seed, they faced East Meadow, the fourth seeded team, and defeated them by a score of thirty-five to eight. Um, a record-breaking performance was led by senior Jonathan DeBeek, Jonathan broke the single-game rushing record with three hundred and forty-eight yards on twenty carries, he had four of the Bruins' five touchdowns, previous record was held by Ricardo Manigat, who rushed for three hundred and six yards in the Nassau County Championship game in two thousand and five. We play Freeport this Thursday, um, at Hofstra University, seven-third. The varsity volleyball Lady Bruins, um, earned the number four seed and advanced to Nassau County playoffs, and hosted the number five Syosset Braves, Wednesday, November, uh, second, the Lady Bruins were defeated in five games, um, losing the final match twenty-five to twenty-seven, so even though they lost, that was really close and quite an accomplishment, finally, in a cup series, so, that's what I got.
We are going to now do, um, comments and reports from the Board of Education, um, what we had decided to do, all five of us, um, plus Dr. Kami, were at the New York State School Awards Association Annual Convention in Buffalo, uh, recently, and, um, we're each going to report on, we went to their, um, well, I guess for those who don't know, if you haven't been there, um, it's kinda like PTA conventions, and they have different sessions, um, and it's all just to improve our education, uh, as board members, and so what we had decided was each one of us is gonna report on one of the sessions that we had attended, um, let me start down here, Sue, you wanna go first? You wanna, all right, you wanna start down here?
Okay, so the session that I attended was, um, crisis management, not the most uplifting, but very necessary, um, you know, all throughout education, public education, there's always been some form of crisis management, um, probably not too many, but a few of us remember, maybe going out in the hallway, getting down on your hands and knees, covering up your, your head, you know, for fear of some crazy thing that was gonna come out of the sky, to the fire drills that we're all very familiar with, and our kids are today, but unfortunately, as we all know, it's, it's a very different world, and this seminar was given by a company called Armor One, and the gentlemen that own this company and give these presentations are all ex-military, some are ex-SWAT, and two of them are current SWAT, so they are called very often onto these horrible scenes, and/or consult on them, I'm late. Yes, yes. Or they, um, you know, remotely will consult on them, so, just, just a few points that, that they made, you know, unfortunately, besides the, the traditional things that we have to prepare for, the, the most important thing that districts need to be prepared for these days are active shooters, and, you know, in any of the places this happened, nobody thought that it would happen, and districts, they have a plan, and as these gentlemen pointed out, a lot of times the plan is in a binder, and it's in a file cabinet, and maybe it was discussed a couple times, that's tradition, but again, moving into the future, we need to make sure that we have good communication set up, plans that everyone understands, and is up to speed on, very, very important, and so one of the most important things that they talked about was, on every scene that, that they've been aware of, I don't wanna say the biggest problem, the biggest problem is, is the criminal and the horrible act going on, but that they cannot get there in time to give attention to this scene, because through Facebook, or through, uh, cellphone, or somehow, the word has gotten out that something is going on, and every parent, and aunt, and uncle, and grandparent having anything to do with this school rushes there, and then the emergency personnel can't get near it, so they can't help the students, they can't stop what, what horrible thing may be going on, and that's all gotta be part of what's discussed in a district on your emergency plan. Now, there's something going on apparently right now, I forget the phrase that's used for it, but it's fake calls coming in to, uh, to police, that these horrible things are going on in a school, and they're not happening, and what is happening is this call is being placed, it's being rerouted through, like, two different countries, and, and then once it gets back here, four different communities, so in other words, they cannot trace this, they had one community upstate where this happened fifteen times, and they had to respond, just like it was, you know, a full-on active scene, all fifteen times, so the first, you know, one through five, it was a disaster, because again, we don't really prepare adequately for these things, now, they got to prepare over and over and over again, unfortunately, and now, God forbid, they would be very good at it, but it's something that districts need to look at, um, so that the, the parents trying to get there, that, that is, that is really the biggest problem, and I can tell you, even going back to, to nine eleven, I had kids, one in the harbor, one at Plaza, one at the high school, as soon as that started to happen, I was at my door, and I, I was, I didn't know which school, and my husband, who, who is an emergency responder, grabbed me and said, no, you're not going to any of them, and it's the hardest thing to do, but it's just something to give some thought to. Now, a lady was there from Belmore, and she said, in their district, I, I believe she was just talking about the high school, but there is a blue light on top of their school, it makes no sound, but if that blue light is on, you're not to go near that school, so again, something, it would be something hard for parents to come to grips with, but if we want them to adequately be able to, you know, take care of what's going on, then it is something that we have to think about. So it was very, very interesting, again, it's, it is something that we should all talk about, we should review, there's, there's always things that can be done to improve, and I know it's not a great subject, but we wanna be safe, we wanna provide a safe learning environment for our students in our community.
Thank you, that was great.
Thank you.
Um, one of the workshops that I went to was on, uh, was an update on collective bargaining, and they, uh, the leaders of the workshop talked about the atmosphere that is surrounding contract negotiations right now, um, that, uh, unions have taken concessions over a fairly long period of time, so there is not much appetite anymore for continuing to accept concessions, on the other hand, the, uh, TRS and ERS, uh, contributions provide a real roller coaster of, um, increases and decreases, so it makes the predictability for a school district, uh, very difficult, uh, the contributions are tied to, uh, the performance of the stock market, um, and it means that districts may one year have to contribute, um, ten percent of their, uh, payroll, another year maybe thirteen percent, or five percent, and it varies every year, so you have situations where you really can't predict out several years what your costs are going to be, and they also reminded all of us that pensions and tenure are protected, uh, by the New York State Constitution, um, they, we had a conversation about, uh, thirty-twenty D, which is the regulation surrounding, um, teacher observation, and, uh, the ways for these scores, and how they can be used, and the difficulty surrounding that, um, they also, there was also a, a list of things that different districts are using around the state, that, uh, are provisions and contracts that are a little outside the box, uh, people are trying to come up with solutions that are somewhat creative, in order to give teachers some, uh, some concessions that are relatively inexpensive for districts, so overall, it was very informative.
Great, thank you.
Why do you have to skip?
Uh, 'cause I, I'm gonna go last.
'Cause he's Mr. President. I like that, um, so good evening, everyone, no, that's okay, I won't do that, um, so I had the opportunity to be the voting delegate, um, at this conference, and, um, attended the National Business Meetings for the various resolutions that were presented and discussed, and what happens with these resolutions is how NISBA will actually, um, handle their advocacy agenda on behalf of the various districts, based on how these resolutions are presented and approved on, um, so not going into all of the over twenty-five resolutions that were discussed, I'll just highlight some areas that I think are relevant, um, a lot of them had to do with certain financial resolutions, for instance, um, we passed a resolution that called New York State to repay, um, what was held from the districts in terms of the Gap Elimination Act, so that was a, a resolution that was approved, the other one was also asking NISBA to advocate on our behalf of schools, for the various, um, legislative and policies to evaluate the funding formula, that, the state aid formula that's currently, um, convoluted in so many ways, but to actually take certain things into account in terms of enrollment, and poverty, and all these different aspects, so those are the financial formulas, um, also, currently, there's a correlation between the state aid and a number of students that are taking the tests, and that's how we get funding, so as delegates, we ask NISBA to seek legislation so that this would no longer be the case, that it would not be related to the actual test being involved. In terms of academic issues, um, important legislation, so as we know, right now, in terms of high school, one needs to obtain a region's diploma, so we also asked for legislation to reinstate the local diploma, um, as a different pathway, so it would only be focused on the region's diploma, but allow the, us to reinstate the local diploma for other ways for students to graduate, um, overall, sixteen resolutions were passed, which will be part of this advocacy agenda for two thousand and seventeen for NISBA.
Thank you.
You know I have to lead with the Cubs. For those of you guys who don't know me, I'm originally from Chicago, so I'm ecstatic that the Cubs won a World Series after a hundred and eight years, so, ooh, um, I had the, and while I was up there, we were stressing, they were like, listen, we need to get back to the room, no, I can't go, I gotta watch the game to the end, but that aside, um, I had the opportunity to attend a workshop on fundraising, it was particularly interesting to me because a few years back, we did a lot, extensive fundraising when we had, um, issues with our budget, so I, I wanted to find out from, um, there was a lawyer for, I think it's Barn, mm, Bernowski, um, who presented the workshop, and so it was very interesting because, um, they talked about, 'cause we talk often about, well, how come we can't get Coca-Cola or Pepsi, you know, to, to advertise on buses and things of that nature, and so they talked about the difference between, um, sponsor versus advertising, there is school law that says that we cannot promote companies, we just can't do it, but if they were to sponsor it, then that's allowable, so it's like, the, the, the general gist of the whole workshop is that you're doing this tap dance of what's, you know, what's allowable by the law, and you're really kinda splitting hairs, um, so they talked about that, we talked about, um, the school's ability to have, they have limited ability to raise funds, but some of the things that we're doing, like, you know, using our real estate to, um, generate revenue, is one of the things that are perfectly allowable within, you know, the, um, the law, for us to generate revenues to fundraise, they also talked about, um, seeking, like, the solar panels and those kinds of things that we could do as well, um, but they, there was also a lot of discussion about the use of foundations, and so the foundations, and there were people in the room that talked about how they use their foundations, they have educational foundations, they also have community foundations that kind of is the umbrella for the other, like, bulk, like, educational foundations, and so it was very interesting because, of course, as foundations, outside of the five-oh-one, C-three, things that they're, you know, restricted, they have a lot more latitude in terms of how they, you know, what kinds of things they can do to raise funds, so it was very int, it was a very interesting workshop, and, um, I have more, you know, if anybody's interested in more details, I'll, I'm willing to share, but that was kinda the gist of everything.
Thank you very much, sorry, I was trying to find information about the speaker, the, the session that I wanted to talk about, actually, we had all attended, including Dr. Kami, on Twenty-First Century Facility Transformation, um, it was really interesting and, and very timely, given that we actually, like, the night before we left, uh, had the community input meeting, um, and this session was run by Robert Hedrick, so I was trying to find out the company we work for, but, um, an individual who has done a number of projects, mostly upstate, correct me if I'm wrong, um, working with school districts on helping them to, um, design creative Twenty-First Century learning environments, uh, in schools, um, and he talked about the process that he uses, which often is a two-to-three-year process, um, gain, you know, speaking with the community, um, and, and the staff, and getting input from just a lot of people, um, in, in helping them to develop the vision for, uh, the space, and what was interesting, what I thought was interesting was, you know, they, they went in and the districts kind of had an idea, and at the end, he said, I think, almost every time, is that the ideas, the projects were larger than what they originally, what the districts had initially planned, um, and then, you know, the community and everyone got behind this, and the funding, um, to pass funds to, to, to cover these projects, um, in particular, there was a superintendent from Queensberry who talked about his experience, uh, and they had images from the, the projects that they did up there, and, and really, very outside-of-the-box thinkings, I mean, learning spaces in kind of little nooks off of hallways, very free-form, uh, environments that I think are in line with some of the things that, um, that we've been doing here, at the elementary schools, and then particularly, um, you know, spaces at the high school as well, so I think we all left there with some very good kind of ideas, um, for us moving forward, and I think the timing was, was really good for us in terms of, because we just sort of started that project of getting input, um, from the community, so, uh, yeah, that's what I wanted to report on. Um, and we've all been out and about in the community at the football games, and the field hockey games, and intramural night, and everywhere, so I'm sure if you've been at any of those events, you've seen at least one of us there. All right, we are going to now open up the microphone for our first public comment session, um, the session is a timed session, it's, uh, no more than thirty minutes, um, individuals who wanna speak, uh, can head up to the microphone, um, time per person is limited to no more than three minutes, this first comment period, we limit to items that are on the agenda for the evening, um, if you, so if you have a question, head up to the mic, um, give us your name and address, so that we can get in touch with you if there's a need for that, um, there will be a second comment period at the end of the meeting, which is not limited in terms of subject, it's open for anything, um, so if you have questions that are not related to the agenda, please wait till the end, um, we ask that if you do have questions when you approach the mic, um, please be respectful, um, and just address your questions to me, so we're gonna open the comment period, if anyone has questions.
Robert Kuglmas, nine-seven-nine, Van Buren Street. Last month, we got the results of the audit, which showed us with a twelve million dollar...
That's, that's not an agenda item for this evening, so I'd ask that you come back at the second comment period, please.
You know, Mr. Press, you ask for respect, you need to give some respect, too.
I, I'm not sure how that was...
It's not like we have a long line of people here.
I'm not sure how that was disrespectful, Mr. Kuglmas.
You're cutting the period down to three minutes, and you won't even give me the three minutes, you just, and it happened last month, too.
I explained that this comment period is for...
You're abusing your position to step on the comments, the people.
I absolutely disagree with you there, but I announced at the beginning, this comment period was for agenda items only.
Right, and on the agenda was the Treasury's report, and I'm talking about the Treasury.
You're talking about the audit, though.
I'm talking about the Treasury, we ran a twelve million dollar, connect the dots...
That's, that's not part of the Treasury, that's not part of the Treasury's report.
It is part of the agenda, you just voted on the Treasury's report, and I'm talking about the Treasury, that's not, you know, that's not a difficult...
That's the Treasury's report is not related to the...
And look how you just continue to abuse your position, you won't let anybody speak.
Mr. Kuglmas, we set the, the guidelines for this comment period.
Right, the guidelines, and I'm talking about the Treasury's report.
You're talking about the audit and the...
We have the Treasury's report, you just voted on it, it's item three.
What's your question about the Treasury's report?
I'm talking about the budget surplus, which feeds into the Treasury...
That's, that has nothing to do with the Treasury's report.
Look, this isn't a debate, I'm not asking you a question...
All I'm asking you to do is wait till the comment period at the end.
This isn't a debate, Mr. Press, I'm here to make a comment, the least you could do is show some respect and allow people to make a comment, it's a comment period, and you're abusing, you're abusing your position.
It's a comment period specific to the agenda, I'm not abusing...
Last, last month, you did the same thing, you just interrupt willy-nilly when you don't want people to comment about it.
Because, Mr. Kuglmas, we set the guidelines, and you refuse to follow them, so you're the one who's not respecting the rules that we set.
We have on the agenda tonight the Treasury's report, I'm talking about the Treasury, it's not that difficult, Mr. Press.
It's, Mr. Kuglmas, the Treasury's report...
You ran a twelve million dollar budget surplus last year.
That has to do with last year, and not the Treasury's report, Mr. Kuglmas.
Seven million, it's not, well, it should be.
It's not part of the Treasury's report.
You weren't aware of that, that you ran such a budget, that's, that's what our Treasury does, to let him pick up on that for you?
I don't, I, I don't know how you jump from one conclusion to the next, but you're wasting your time arguing with me instead of... I don't, I, I don't know how you jump from one conclusion to the next, but you're wasting your time arguing with me instead of you want to bring this up, bring it up in the second comment period.
I just want to make three minutes of commentary, you're arguing with me. I'm just here to make a comment, and I'm prepared to make a comment.
Mr. Kugelmas, is, is no one else that has a question related to a budget item, uh, not, I'm sorry, to an agenda item? We're gonna close the comment period and move on.
You know, you know, I'll tell you what's on the agenda, the agenda is the first comment period. We're talking about the process of the first comment period, how you're abusing the process of the first comment period.
Okay, I'm sorry, your, your time is up, Mr. Kugelmas.
You won't let people talk.
We're moving on, Mr. Kugelmas. You're welcome to come back at the second comment period at the end of the meeting. Alright, we're moving on.
The operating system of the first comment period.
We are moving on, Mr. Kugelmas. Board of Education approves the personal actions report for November ninth, two thousand and sixteen, as amended, as detailed in the Friday mailing, sorry. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. As this contains the names of individual employees, we do not discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, sub-CE five oh four committee, and Committee on Preschool Special Education in September and October two thousand and sixteen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. This contains information pertaining to individual students, so we do not discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the home tutoring and special education service reports as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. This also contains name, information pertaining to individual students, so we do not discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education awards the bid number zero three two, two thousand and sixteen seventeen pizza delivery to Domino's Pizza, the lowest responsible bidder, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the agreement with Education, Inc. to provide educational tutoring services in a hospital or behavioral health center setting for district students for a cost of forty-two dollars and eight cents per hour for up to five hours per week for students in grades K through six, and up to ten hours per week for students in grades seven through twelve for the two thousand and sixteen seventeen school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the agreement with Sea Tuck Environmental Association to provide an environmental program for the period from December one, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, at a cost of fifty-six hundred dollars, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves memorandum of agreement with Syntax Communication to provide media relation services for the period from September one, two thousand and sixteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, at a rate of three hundred and fifty dollars per hour, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the agreement with Brown and Brown of New York, Inc., doing business as Fitzharris and Company, to act as its agents with regard to payment of certain benefits of the Section one twenty-five cafeteria plan established by the Baldwin Union Free School District at a management fee of three dollars and seventy-five cents per person per month for two thousand and seventeen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the corrective action plan based on the external audit as of June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the budget transfers over ten thousand dollars from July one, two thousand and sixteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves a contract with Emerald Investigations, Inc., to provide vehicle sighting reports for the two thousand and sixteen seventeen school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Dreska.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves contracts for the approved special education programs based upon strategic evaluation data collection and analysis and reporting said CAR one applications and their corresponding October seventh, two thousand and fifteen child count. The per pupil allocation for students placed in a program under Section six nineteen, three to five-year-olds, is four hundred and thirty-one dollars. And for Section six eleven, three to twenty-one-year-olds is one thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. The per pupil allocation for students receiving related services under only Section six nineteen is a hundred and forty-four dollars. And for Section six eleven is three hundred and seventy-one dollars, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves contracts for students attending private residential schools for the two thousand and sixteen seventeen school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. They are as follows. Mary Haven Center of Hope, one student for a cost of fifty-five thousand, twenty-seven dollars. The Lavelle School for the Blind, one student for a cost of seventy thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents. And Martin Depars, one student for a cost, a total cost of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education declares obsolete textbooks in the middle school math department for grades six and seven, which are outdated and no longer usable. Per state rules and regulations, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Dreska. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question, actually, on this. We're talking about quite a large number of books here, and I understand that they're obsolete as per our state rules. But does this mean that they're just thrown in the garbage? Or do we, are we able to find a way to repurpose them maybe elsewhere? Maybe in another state, these would not be out of date, that they would be allowed?
Yeah, to the extent that we can, we do. The textbooks are from two thousand and five, I believe, two thousand and six. They're not Common Core standards. Some of them are not in particularly good condition, to the extent that we can, we do. But, you know, we don't go out and necessarily spend the time to do that.
Any other questions? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education declares obsolete musical instruments at the high school, which are no longer playable or repairable. Per state rules and regulations, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Dreska. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? Actually, you know what, following up, I guess, on this from last month, we had musical instruments last month. And I'm gonna address this to you. But Dr. Draper had mentioned trying to reach out maybe to the Baldwin Friends of Music and Arts. But I don't know, is that something that is feasible, given the conditions of these instruments?
Uh, they're not repairable.
Yeah.
So I don't think they're, they're normal.
Yeah, that's what I figured, they were at the point where we were getting rid of them, we couldn't fix them.
Right.
Okay. Alright. Any other questions or comments? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the updated use of facilities report for September two thousand and sixteen through June two thousand and seventeen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anyone have anything under other?
Can I just, just to mention a couple of the other things that, well, the one that I went to and something else that I went to recently. Press and I attended this symposium, you may have seen it in the, in the papers, in Roosevelt School District, on the subject of English language learners. And the New York State Chancellor was there speaking, as well as Regent Tillis. And it was, it was interesting, they really spoke about the need for-